Good evening to everyone. Call to order for our meeting. First item is to review and approve the agenda. If everyone would study your agenda. See if anyone has any changes. Or suggestions, yes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you. And all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. And that is... Allison, you voting too?
I did.
Yes, oh, sorry, missed. Okay. And that's unanimous then. Thank you. Now we'll look at the minutes for August 17th, 2015. Yes, we have, yes. Motion to approve. Thank you, Sherri. And is there a second? Still looking. A second, Miss... Thank you, Penny. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. And that is unanimous, except for a person who wasn't here. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker, and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Good evening. I said I'd be back to speak on the subject of honest services fraud, which is whistleblower complaint number three that was given to the audit committee. What does it involve? First of all, I'm going to read my comments that were on the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Council from March the 12th of 2013, and these are the official minutes. Mr. Nowacki opened by quoting Benjamin Franklin as follows. "The first responsibility of citizenship is to question authority." He added that he presented a detailed plan that will show that when the town audit is completed, the Board of Education will have overstated by $2.5 million in their historical numbers the salaries of the school district. He continued by questioning the methodology used in the preparation of the Board of Education budget, asking the board to confirm that they were using standard accounting principles, noting that no one on the Board of Finance had questioned the validity and authenticity of the Board of Education numbers. He added, "There are $8 million in errors in the Board of Ed budget, and no mention of a $4 million surplus from the prior year." Mr. Nowacki then stated that the revenues are nonexistent in the Board of Ed budget, and there's millions of dollars not accounted for. I stand by those statements tonight, three years later. What you have in front of you also is Appendix C, which is how the Board of Ed accomplished the misuse of public money in the salaries that were given to them. And the three-page document that you have takes what the carryforward savings were starting in 1988 in this town at $100,000, and goes all the way through to the point where there is $60 million as of this year that has been misappropriately appropriated by this board. And that will be contained in the federal lawsuit that will be filed, and you'll be served before your next meeting. Have a good evening.
Any other comments? There being no other comments, we'll move along on the agenda. Reports and recognition. The opening of the school report. Dr. Lutzey and the principals.
And much more principals than Dr. Lutzey. But I am excited to share with you. Of course, we had a successful opening to our 2015-16 school year, in large part thanks to the great effort and hard work of the five principals that are here with us tonight. They're going to talk a little bit about the experience, maybe share a picture or two, or a little bit of information here and there. And they're here to give us an update on how things are going. We'll start with Mr. Egan at the high school. As you know, Mr. Egan joined us July 1st, and was off and running from the moment he walked in the door. The... Yes. And I will say, one of the great pleasures the last couple, the last two years is the Gary, Darlene, Jill and I, we've been able to get to all five buildings for that opening day, in that opening morning. And to go to each of the schools, to see the students getting off the buses, to see them in the hallways, to see the staff, and the, you know, of course, the administration, everybody out shaking hands with their big smiles and their new sneakers. It really is a special way to start the school year, so. It was great to see all that excitement, and I think that excitement continues even as we unbelievably now begin our third year, our third week of school. Time goes quickly these days. Mr. Egan.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for having me. I've been truly blessed, in the sense that everyone's been so kind to me. Members of the Board of Education have kind of reached out to me as well and said, "Thanks for my opening." And, you know, truthfully, I'm just thankful to all of you, so, thank you. I know you follow me on Twitter this week. [laughter] Our theme this year at the high school is communication and respect. It was something that was tapped on last year, and we wanted to expand upon this year as well. And I share with you all a little bit about my personal vision for really any school, but especially obviously here in New Canaan, since I'm here. You know, truly, I want to create a school where parents want to send their children. They love being a part of the school system. The kids want to learn and love coming to school. And really, the staff feels valued and respected each and every day. And for me, there are two key components to that. Number one, that people always do their personal best, and they learn from any difficulties they face. You know, truly, if people make mistakes, it's a natural part of life, we all do. It's really about learning from those mistakes and making ourselves better at all times. And the second part is really being kind and compassionate to everyone that we meet. Truly, if we're, you know, if we can look ourselves in the mirror and just be kind to people at all times, and I don't think anyone ever looked back and said, "I regret to being, you know, too kind to someone," so. Opening day was very interesting for me. Dr. Lutzey had told me that, you know, the students might get there a little early, so I figured I'd do myself, you know, a wonderful thing by getting here early. So I showed up at about 6:10, and there were already about 40 students here. And, you know, they had, you'll see on the left there, they had a little sidewalk paint, or sidewalk chalk that was up there, and they were kind of just wishing everyone good luck. And, you know, it was really interesting to see. Then I went down to the basement, and there was already students down there, music blaring and speakers on. Kids were very happy, and you see a picture in the middle there with them, you know, just being thrilled to be there. One of them said, "Frosh are friends and not food," so he wanted to make sure they were inclusive of all grade levels. And then during lunch that day, you know, it was interesting to me, because I think kids are just really little kids at heart, and all the senior girls had their backpacks on. You could see, you know, all the Disney animated backpacks they still have, so. You know, it comes down to, my daughter is now in fifth grade, but I remember very well, you know, going to kindergarten, and that these kids are leaving high school with similar themed backpacks, so, very interesting.[495.52][495.52][laughter] Day two, they were right at work. Went to the classrooms, people were collaborating, and really, you know, there were group activities going on in every room, so it was great to see that the second day of school, everyone was hard at work. And then the parent groups, I was, you know, I will share this too. Dr. Lutzey said to me, he said, "You know, Bill, don't be surprised when you show up to a parent group that the crowd can be a little bit overwhelming." I said, "What? Having parents around is a good thing." So I showed up at my first freshman ninth-grade networking meeting to see, you know, this large room of people. I was, first of all, I loved it, it was great, but it definitely was a little humbling to see 120 parents, you know, actively engaged in everything we're trying to do, so. That was great. We do have a couple of goals at the high school this year. One of them is around personalization. We really feel like we need to do a good job in connecting to students' learning styles and demonstrating how they can show this through process, what's being taught, oh, sorry, the content, what's being taught, the process, how it's taught, and then the product, how they can demonstrate it through learning. So that's one of the focuses that we'll have this year. And the other for us is going to be on communication. You know, we want to enhance the communication amongst the school, and teachers are going to make sure that they have a website at the end of this school year that meets a minimal design template that we have for the high school. So those are our goals through the year. I will also adhere to those goals. Hopefully, many of you have seen the communication that I'm trying to promote throughout the high school, and, you know, certainly, I'm trying to change the format a little bit, change the website, the way we communicate a little bit and do business at the high school as well, so hopefully you're following that as well. So, I just wanted to say thank you. It was a great opening, and truly, I'm privileged to be here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions that anybody would like to ask? Well, we can do some of the, do everybody at the end then?
I just wanted to add, well, you're off and running, and I think that's fantastic. I've heard so much positive feedback from parents about your communications. And also, I know that the PFA initiated something new this year, a freshman walkthrough on the day before school, which I think was a great idea and helped get the freshmen more comfortable with the building. But I think so many parents commented that you stood out there in front and personally met every parent and student who came in, and welcomed them, and introduced yourself, and that type of outreach means a lot to the community, so I just wanted to thank you for that. And again, at that parent freshman orientation, which I was at, 120 parents, you were the last one to leave, stood there shaking hands, answering questions, and that's very much appreciated.
Well, thank you. That's kind of, you know, obviously, I consider it to be my job, but thank you.
Sounds like a very positive beginning. Anybody have any other questions or collaborations? Thank you very much.
Then we'll ask Mr. Macedo.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good evening. We also had a very strong opening and a smooth transition. I want to, I want to highlight a few things. First, just a thank you to the faculty and the staff and the parents for supporting the transition. We can take it for granted, I think, sometimes, what effort goes into starting a new school year outside of the school. And I think I'd be remiss not to mention all the effort that others have put into making such a successful opening at the middle school. We have 14 new teachers at the middle school and 60 new students. So those 14 teachers break out, one in fifth, one in sixth, four in seventh grade, a new French teacher, a new music choral teacher, a new art teacher, special ed, school psychologist, social worker, and of course, a new assistant principal to Saks, Steve Bedard. We also have, it's a little daunting, 1,352 students, which is larger than we expected by about nine or 10. As you know, but for the benefit of the public, we actually run two school schedules at Saks, so our opening and closing is on a staggered basis, starting at 7:30 and ending at 2:55. You'll notice if you approach the school, you can see them from the street, we have a campaign that launched this year around student identity. The students between the ages of 10 and 14, these are the most critical years that one starts to formulate their self-concept, and they begin to explore what they want to become and who they are presently. You can see that the theme in the banners is "At Saks, It's Cool." And I don't know about you, but almost everybody I interview to become a middle school teacher cringes when I ask, "What were you like in middle school?"[803.82][803.82][laughter] It's not really the fondest time to be nostalgic about. But it's really important to give kids feedback that it is okay to be who you are during those ages of 10 to 14, and there's nothing more refreshing than seeing smiling faces depicted at the front of a school every morning. As you know, sometimes our emerging adolescents can come to school a little bit tired and maybe a little bit subdued. But those banners are, I think, an example to kids that it's okay to be who you are, and you don't have to be any one thing to fit in. Along those lines, we are continuing the theme. One of our school goals is student empowerment. We'll be working again with our consultant from Safe Measures, Dr. Bill Preble. And some of you will remember back in May, our SWAG eighth graders presented their recruitment videos for student leadership. We'll be reinaugurating those teams starting this fall. We have seventh graders rising into eighth grade, who are part of the leadership structure, and we have fifth graders last year rising into sixth grade, who are ready to be part of the leadership structure. So this first semester, we'll have sixth and eighth grade in leadership roles, and they will be leading in the second semester the development of those fifth and seventh graders. So by the end of the year, we'll have student leadership teams in all four grades. Of course, another school goal is student achievement. We'll continue to work on raising the bar. All our departments have already started in their professional learning sessions before the students arrived, at looking at their assignments and their assessments to make sure that we are using higher-order thinking skills and complex problem-solving methods in all curricular areas. Similar to the high school, we're also stressing homeschool communication. You'll notice that the School Wires website, we trained on that at the end of the school year, the last day in June. All our teachers had the summer, and our teams of teachers have reposted their websites onto the School Wires website, including the administration. You can visit and see my blog, my Twitter account, and our Blackboard Connect emails on a regular basis. Finally, I wanted to share a little story. I've been in this business quite a while, and I kind of think I could anticipate what every new child might be going throughout the school. But I was looking out for some of the stragglers after the bell rang, who weren't making it to their class on time, and went up to one boy in sixth grade and asked him if he needed help. And he looked at me with only the look a sixth-grade boy could look at you on the first day, who doesn't want to be bothered by the school principal. And he looked up and he just said, "I don't need any help. I'm in sixth grade now. I know how it works."[983.01][983.01][laughter] And it's a reminder that they really are resilient. And in that resiliency, I think we saw a very strong opening. Of course, the paternalistic nature of any school administrator. I followed him down the hall, just to make sure he made it into that right class. But it was just a tender moment. It's the reason I think we all went into this business, and it's a reminder that all the effort and preparation is well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Sherri.
Rick, can you give us an update on the transition to the six-day rotational schedule?
Our six-day rotational schedule is in sync with the three elementary schools in town. So if you visit the three elementary school websites on our website, you'll see that the letter "Day" is in sync with all four schools. That allows us to share staff across levels. So I do have a PE teacher who goes to another school, and it makes sense, because formerly that PE teacher was teaching a class at an elementary school, and because we weren't on the same schedules, the elementary children weren't receiving the same instruction from the same teacher every week. So we needed to correct that. That was kind of a no-brainer. The other benefit it gives us is it allows us to change our workshop delivery period. So now we're able to offer some new coursework during workshop, which has just launched this week. And there's more information for the public on our website about the workshop period if they want more detail.
Any other questions? Sangita?
I just wanted to comment again on your new banner campaign. I think that was just wonderful. I think it's a great, I'm not sure how the students perceive it, but even from the parents' perspective, of just kind of thinking middle schoolers and the positive images with that, it's great to build their self-esteem up, you know, saying it's cool to be an engineer or a scientist, or to, you know, be a friend even. It helps them to be actually better learners, and I think that was just a great way visually putting it out there. You know, like I said, middle school can always be the time in life where it's just hard and difficult, and it's a great visual to show that, you know, it could be, there's good things too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, Scott.
I know that you're flexing a lot over there these days, in terms of space, in terms, now you got nine kids more than your 10 or whatever that you thought you were going to have. And we have a lot of plans for how, you know, space has changed, and how we're moving around the building, and you got construction and whatnot. I just wondered, is it everything you hoped it would be?
Well, I think that Mr. Gress is probably referring to the fact that we had to co-op two more classrooms to open this year. One computer lab upstairs in the Library Media Center, and the former foreign language or world language audio lab. So both of those spaces are now converted to core classrooms. We'll be using the conversion technology. We'll have the equivalent of two laptop carts in order to take the functionality of those two spaces and make them portable.
Any other questions? I'm sure that's every day is sort of a little bit of a flexing, to use the term that was used before. Thank you very much.
But if we go right across the street, Ms. Rocco?
We are off to a great start at South. We're very grateful to have air conditioning in our buildings these past couple of weeks. It's made it a much better opening to the start of school. But just to give you a quick enrollment update, we started the school year with 551 students. We ended last year with 550 students, so we stayed pretty stable in our enrollment numbers. We have 27 sections, which is the same as we had last year also. 39 new students, and we had 25 withdrawals from kindergarten through third grade. We have five new certified staff members, three are classroom teachers, one speech and language teacher, and one special education teacher. Our building, majority of our building looked great for the start of the school year. There was a lot of work done on our grounds, thanks to Bob and his crew. And we have a new kindergarten playground, that's courtesy of our PTC, and the funds were raised through our Giving Tree fundraiser. So we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony the first day of school on the kindergarten playground. Our PTC president spoke for a few minutes. Then we had our, our school mascot, Sal Quah, did the honors and cut the ribbon for us, so the kindergarteners could start playing on their new playground, so that looks beautiful. The back field, if you haven't had a chance to visit that, it looks absolutely beautiful. They did a great job with the landscaping. There's a new retaining wall there, there's all-new landscaping done. It's now handicapped, accessible, new mulch. It just looks, it really looks beautiful compared to what it used to look like. We had some paving done in the front of the school. We had some massive potholes from the winter. We could have lost a few small children in those potholes. So those were, the front driveway was paved. Our windows project, Phase One, the remediation, that was completed by the end of July on schedule, or actually, a little bit before schedule. The office staff was relocated here to the high school, actually, the past two summers, and they treated us very well here. Phase Two, the window replacement, actually, will start at the end of this week with some kind of pre-work being done Thursday and Friday of this week, and then next week, we should be into full swing in terms of starting to replace windows in the classroom, so that's a great sign. We'll do two classrooms at a time, and we have two swing spaces that we'll move those classes into. And we'll also plan a parent informational session, just to talk about the process, the progress that we've made, and just going forward, what the timeline might look like, and also the results of all the testing that we've gotten. So our school really looks beautiful, thanks to the work of a lot of, a lot of people. Open houses, we have those scheduled for tomorrow, kindergarten through second grade. All parents will have a chance to come and hear some informational sessions given by the teachers, and then next Wednesday also for third and fourth grade. A couple informal goals. One that we would like to continue from last year is around service learning for children. We did, each of our classes or grade levels did some really great service projects last year, which we felt were really important for children to be involved in. Last year, a lot of them connected our students with the, with the residents at Wavenee Care. We probably went over there about six or seven times over the course of the year, did a few concerts over there. Halloween, some classes went over and did a Halloween parade for the residents. Some of our fourth-grade classes read some poetry, they read some of their stories. And it was really great for our students, and I think it was great for the residents also, just to make that connection. We're so close, we could just walk across the street. I think it was really meaningful for our students also, and for our staff members who were involved. Did a lot of projects that benefited some local food pantries, and also some, a lot of book collections also, that benefited some of the area literacy programs. So that's an informal goal that we would like to continue this year. And also, an informal goal around communication with parents, and really increasing that, and increasing the positive communication with parents, and making that a regular part of our week also. So those are some informal goals in coordination with some formal goals that we're still working on and hope to formalize by the end of this week. So all in all, it was a great start to the school year, and a smooth start to the school year too. So thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Well, I think it's been terrific what you've done with the windows not being quite in, and hopefully, the shade keeps it cooler a little bit. I hope there's a compensation on a distraction. No distractions to look out the windows, right?[1497.11][1497.11][laughter]
Not great for the house plans, though.
Well, this is true, but you all have handled it really well, so thank you.
Chris?
So last winter, across the district, we launched a new platform for our websites. And I thought that, as I'm sharing about our opening, I might use the website to give you some visuals of what's been happening at East School. So we welcomed about 550 students back to school this year. It was about 99 new kindergarteners who had their first day just a few weeks ago. We have about 30 new students in grades one through four, so they are new families to us, new students to us. And we welcome both the students and the families. We have 28 sections this year. That's one less than we had last year. Two new classroom teachers, we have a new guidance counselor, we have a new special education teacher, a new math specialist, a new writing specialist. So we're welcoming some other community members as well. What we hosted as we prepared for the opening of the school were many new-to-East events for these new families and new students, and an opportunity to meet some of our new staff. So as we were hosting those events, we also put on our website a link that would allow new families, and also returning families, to be up to date on the facts and figures, we called it, of East School. And so it listed for them, and we had sent newsletters out to parents to make them aware of this link, information about who our mascot is, the school colors, our motto of "Work Hard, Be Kind," information that we felt would help students feel in the know as they came for their first day, particularly a new, say, third grader who was entering the school for the first time. We also uploaded links to our full staff roster. Let me scroll down here. Links to a scavenger hunt that students who did come to visit us on our new-to-East day undertook the scavenger hunt with some staff, Mrs. Bruin and myself, escorting them around the school. The answer key was also online, in case any were pursuing this at home. And then we included some frequently asked questions, and we really tried to take this from the student perspective. So those important questions like, "What are the favorite hot lunches that are served at East School?" "How many playgrounds are at East School?" "What instruments can I play at East School?" "What technology do I have access to?" So information that whether you're a returning student or a new student in particular, you might want to know before that first day. We also are using our website this year. In conjunction with the PTC, they put out a weekly newsletter, and we're trying to include each week in that newsletter, information as to what's happening in the school in terms of the school whole-school student learning focus, or our school climate focus, our learning community focus for the year. So we are doing that through some newsletters that each week will update some of what's happening in the school. In this case, it was connected more to our whole-school student learning focus around higher-order thinking, critical thinking and reasoning that will be developing throughout the year in terms of the instructional tasks that teachers are using in their classroom, the instructional experiences students are undertaking, as well as student discourse in the classroom, and the level of thinking demonstrated in that discourse. Here, we just, we're featuring some of our new science furniture, thanks to the PTC, that is supporting the learning environment, that's going to encourage the discourse and the dialogue, as students are working in some new STEM-related units this year as well. Previously, last week, we featured more of our learning community, or what we call our, our school climate focus, which this year, as teachers were looking at school climate data and unpacking that from the perspective of the young child, we're focusing on the development of empathy in young children. And teachers spent time before the start of the school year really unpacking what explicit instruction around empathy might entail and look like with young children, and coming to the foundational teaching around perspective-taking, self-regulation, conflict resolution, and for some of our youngest children, the ability to identify how another might be feeling based on their body language, their facial expressions, and how to recognize whether that's similar to how they're feeling in a given situation, or how another might feel differently than they feel in a situation. And developing that sense of empathy, and then helping children develop the response that you might take. How do you take action when you're able to empathize with another, to be able to... How do you take action when you're able to empathize with another, to be able to support that other person? What that also is entailing this year is a greater emphasis on some cross-grade experiences. So we have lots of opportunities for children to work with each other at their grade level, but we're working more and more at how we can take advantage of the fact that we are a K-4 school, and we have some opportunities then for kindergarteners to work with third graders, or first graders to buddy up with fourth graders. And there's perspective-taking that happens in both directions, when you put children of different ages together in a facilitated way, such as that. So our staff is exploring some different opportunities for that, and we are really looking forward to how we can keep sharing the work that we're doing with parents, both through visual communication, as well as, you know, the narrative that goes with that. Just to also share that our facilities department across the district, as well as our custodial staff, did a phenomenal job this summer. We had lots of camps going on throughout July at East School this year. The custodial staff really did a phenomenal job having our building ready by the end of August to receive children and have a wonderful welcoming environment for them. So we appreciate all of their work as well. We look forward to a terrific year ahead and sharing more as the year unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Sounds like quite a lot of goals and exciting ways of working on them. Thank you.
And Jan Murphy, principal from West Elementary School.
And I don't have a visual, but I guess I do. The biggest, the big word at West this year is the word "new." Everyone is new to West, and we have a brand-new speech and language pathologist, a new grade-two teacher, two new teachers to grade-three, two new special education teachers, a new guidance counselor, a new school nurse, a new school secretary, and a new secretary to the principal. So I am finding myself saying a lot, "How can I help you?" Because just to try to be as supportive as I can, just having been a new person to the district last year, so everything, our motto is, "Everything is new at West this year," and so we're just learning to problem-solve together. We started off the year with welcoming, at our New-to-West, 36 new students, and that did not include our 87 new kindergarten students who started their first day coming to school for that first hour with their parents, so they could get to know the routines of the classroom. I have to say, and go on record, and thank everyone behind the scenes, it was probably one of the most smoothest, or the smoothest, opening day I've ever had in my entire career. So I said to Mrs. Fornari, our assistant principal, I said, "I don't know what we're doing, but we're doing something right." So I thank transportation and everyone from behind the scenes, everything went off without a hitch. At our very first staff meeting, it was great to get everyone together, do a lot of introductions. We worked a little bit on our social and personal curriculum, tying that to our teacher evaluation, and we created some school goals around the area of rigor, using one of the district objectives of an opportunity to expand opportunities for students to engage in self-assessment, goal-setting, and collaboration. So we're tying that right with that. And then with our learning community goal, we're continuing the work that we did last year with our school climate. We built that beautiful mural in the lunchroom, and so we are working on the concept of learning how to self-regulate. So one of the things that we did is we purchased the responsive classroom chimes for each of the certified staff members in our buildings, and it's a very high-pitched sound that lasts for about 20 seconds, and it teaches students that that's about the approximate time that we kind of expect them to regroup and transition. And then we bought for teaching kids to self-regulate when they become anxious, Hoberman spheres, which teaches them to take nice, deep breaths and exhale. And the hope is that they'll start to learn to use some of these tools on their own and learn to self-regulate. We're continuing with our "be ready, be respectful, be responsible." We added this year to our school climate our fourth-grade bus helpers, who were placed on the bus in the morning to help our kindergarten students ease the transition to school on that second full day of school. We're continuing with our morning meetings, and we're hoping, like East did, to add a student leadership team to our school climate committee this year, as well as a parent communication group, because some of the survey results that we got, parents said they know we're doing a lot in the area of school climate, but they just don't know enough about it. And so we're going to get really creative and innovative about how to get that message out to parents. One of the biggest positive pieces of feedback I have gotten is from parents, because we added five minutes between the lunch waves, and I've had parents actually call me, stop me in the hallway, to say that my child actually finished his lunch. That was a big area of concern last year, so we, I think, have made a good amount of progress in that area. This year, we're doing, the entire school is doing what we call "One Book West." The book that we chose is The One and Only Ivan, which has more of an older grade-level book, but it's also a picture book, so it'll be available to both age groups. And then today, we had our first PTC coffee, and welcome parents to join us in our partnership as we do the tough work that we do of raising responsible and respectful students. And I actually told them that they are really the magical ingredient that we use. The parents are the ones that really do that work that we don't have time to, to keep us organized. So I know Chris had this on her website, and both East and South School also were the recipients of a buddy bench that was created by one of West School alumnis, Charlie Sokolowski, and he presented at all three of our school assemblies, and he donated that. And a buddy bench is really intended to be a bench where students find they don't have anyone to play with, they just go and sit on the bench. And the rule is that whoever the first person is that comes to talk to you on the bench, you can't say no, you have to go and play with them. So it's, he came and he talked about that, and it was great for some of the teachers I know to see him, to see the results of his efforts and how far he's come in his school career. Over the summer, I have to say a special thanks to our custodial department, because they moved quite a number of classrooms. One of the things we did at the end of the year was we created a three-to-five-year plan for the building, so that we could keep our younger students in the lower buildings and our upper-grade students in the back buildings, and they did a phenomenal job. We have a new parent beautification for the school grounds group who mulched all of our flowers and planted, will be planting bulbs in the fall. And we also have our open house. This one is, the first one is Thursday night for grades K-2 and 4, and then September 15th for grades 1 and 3. And to build on the work that we did last year, we took, we had worked on the book, The Dot, to sort of send a unifying message. This year, Mrs. Fornari got to pick her book, and it's called "Only One You." And it's a book filled with inspirational words and wisdom about being the personal, your personal best, and that there is only one you, and you should just be you. And it has wonderful quotes on the inside cover that we're hoping our student leadership team can develop some ideas around that, and how to spread those out around the school. So that's part of our school climate work this year. So it's been a great start to a great school year, and again, I think, I know, transportation, custodial staff, there's a lot that goes into it that we don't always see, so I appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from anyone? It sounds like a lot of things happening, certainly. Certainly, listening to everything that's happening in the schools, there's such a wonderful energy level that I think we can all feel that, and the excitement of it, and so glad to hear it from you, because we know that whatever's happening here is tripled, quadrupled, whatever, happening in the schools. So thank you all very much. Anybody have anything else they want to add on to? Yes?
I just wanted to thank all of you. I thought, I found it interesting that across all grades, K through 12, that there was the recurring theme of kindness, compassion, and respect. And I think parents in this district should be so thrilled to hear that not only are we developing really great academic, academically challenged, you know, we have an academically challenging environment, but also that we're preparing them to be good human beings and members of society at large. So I am just thrilled to hear that, that it's, you know, a theme across the district, and I'm sure that's not by accident, so thank you.
Yes, Sheri.
Just to expand on that, another recurring theme, I heard every school principal talk about how communication is a priority and a focus, and as a member of the Board of Ed Communications Committee, I'm thrilled to hear that. And I actually think that shows, I've heard a lot of positive feedback from parents and other community members about the improved communications at the school, so thank you for that.
And I was sort of the same thing, when I heard at West you're doing the communications with, with the, just the understanding spirit, I thought, well, as communication group for the BOE, we've got to tap into that to hear and get some feedback, too, to make sure, because it's a great thing, I'm sure, that all the schools would like to hear. So I'm, again, just to echo that.
Anyone else want to add anything?
So I'll just take the opportunity to echo what the principals each individually said, which was, this is a team effort, right? And it was the very hard work of lots of people in different departments in different areas. You mentioned transportation and facilities, certainly there's food service, there's our secretaries, the teachers, the TAs, everybody who worked together, and certainly the folks sitting here on the left of the table, who were going from building to building and helping to coordinate everything for that opening day, and for everything that's come since, and that will happen as we go through the year. So it's really a team effort, and I think, related to both of the comments, another way that this has, it's become more of a team effort in recent years is the students working with each other. You know, this idea around mentoring, whether it's kindergarten, third grade, first grade and fourth grade, whether it's, you know, the sixth and the eighth grade over at Saks, or the high school teams working back and forth in the different grade levels. I think that mentoring that's going on, and that the team-building that's around that in the schools, is really going a long way to improve the experience for everybody as well. So it's very exciting work going on, and it does take everybody in the entire system from working towards the same goals to help us, to help get us there on behalf of our students, and it's wonderful to hear how aligned everything is as we go.
Definitely, definitely. Did you want to introduce the state of the school report, the facilities?
I would love to, sure. And I know we have a presentation, and so I'll ask Chip to queue that up. You also have a hard copy in front of you of the presentation, and similar to last year, as you know, and this is a communications goal for us here in, for the Board of Education and for the district, lots and lots of work goes on over the summer. Things that are, they get queued up as we go through the year, and then as the students are gone, it's our best chance to get into the schools, to make these changes, to do these facility upgrades, whatever it may be. So while we're on vacation, Bob and his staff are working as hard as ever to try to get everything done over the summer and prepare. So I, last year, we did a similar thing. As we get into the school year, I think it's a good opportunity to sort of review the work that was accomplished over the summer, share some pictures and give some feedback on that, and talk about how it's going to help us moving forward.
Pictures in the book are spectacular. There'll be a short quiz, a short quiz when this is finished.
Sorry. Bob's going to start by referring to the hard copy, and then I'll keep pulling this up.
Just trying, thank you. Just trying to add a little suspense, a little anxiety. I apologize for not having this, we had some technical difficulties.
The pictures look fantastic, so I'm glad everyone can see them.
I'd just like to take a moment to thank everyone, the Board of Education, Superintendent of Schools, the administration. A lot of hard work went into funding all these projects, so I wanted to say thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'd also like to thank the custodial staff, I know most of the principals did do that. They really worked hard this summer to pull all the stuff together, so thank you very much.
If you click on the P on the bottom row, next to the W, all the way down, Chip, can you do that for me?
Where did we go wrong? I don't, where did we hit?
Chip, you should stay close.
Okay. Stay close.
There you go.
Thanks very much. I know the principals explained a lot of things that went on. I at least have some pictures that I can show you of things that we did over the past year and mostly over the summer. There's a new banner program at Saks that I believe Mr. Macedo discussed. It's a great program, and my guys were able to get all these banners hung in a timely fashion. We were pushing it to the 11th hour, but we did get it done, and we've had some great, great remarks about this from children and staff and what have you. This is the Saks Auditorium remediation project, first time in public. I don't know if you can see it there, but this shows you the work, the extensive work that went into the auditorium, to remediate all the paint that was on the walls, take down the ceilings. That object you see hanging in the air there is the old projection booth. And here it is, this is looking from the stage out to the back of the house, the doors that would typically come into the auditorium. The floor has all been removed, shot down, hazardous material removed, so this is the product. So this is the product of the remediation committee that was Brian Lutze, myself and Nancy Harris, along with Slam, the construction manager or the owner's rep and Time Bond and the remediation company. Just another visual, here's the boardups in the lobby. These will all be renovated during the next project. And I just wanted to, you know, I heard some people speaking up here about all the work that went into getting things done. There's a lot of things that happened in the, in the 11th, 11th and a half hour. I was walking by a classroom one day and realized that all the risers and things were still in the classroom and ready to open school the next day. So we, we got some containers and we were able to store a lot of things, which makes a lot of sense because now we don't have to remove them when we do the other part of the project. Saks, we worked in the, in the cafeteria pass through to try to eliminate, alleviate some of the congestion. Seems to be working, but I know now there's a new program moving forward with an engineer doing a study. Took a picture of the gym floor and I stand the head custodian, I think this is near and dear to his heart. He went in and really attacked this floor this summer and the floor was starting to delaminate. And we had to bring in consultants and the manufacturer's rep to try to get this right. He had, I can't tell you how many man hours that he just went in there, was scraping things off the floor. But he was able to do it, work real hard, get it done. We got new finish on the floor and it's holding up very, very well.
It's beautiful.
I heard Mr. Macedo talking about some classrooms that were reconfigured and here's a picture of them. One is the lab on the third floor and the other is the language lab down on the lower level. Lower level is the one on the left and the computer lab up on the third floor is a picture on the right. This entailed taking out all the electrical, all the drops, removing a lot of carrels out of the language lab and putting it all together. So we had a full-blown class, two full-blown classrooms. Unit ventilator valves. Been a lot of talk about it for the last few years. Doesn't seem like a lot, but there's an awful lot of work that goes into this. These valves will control the heating and cooling and they were all shot. We've been able to replace the vast majority of them and there's still another project. It's an energy project that will get some rebates from CLMP. Pretty simple picture. There's a little proxy reader in between the doors. The district had moved forward over the past few years. We have proximity readers so everybody can access the building and we can record who it is and what time. We just never had it at the high school. We had a different system. We were able to modify that. Looks like nothing, but it was a lot of money, a lot of man hours went into this. And we got it working. It's up and running and it's working very, very well. High school electric demand meter. We proposed to put this demand meter in. We were given the go-ahead. There's a little graph on the left that shows the information that we can see. What it does is it controls the motor so that our demand doesn't increase exponentially. The demand charge is what is the multiplier every month that dictates what your bill is going to be. This equipment will prevent that from spiking. It'll say, okay, it looks like too many motors are coming on at the same time and it adjusts the speeds on the motors, adjusts the timing when they come on and it sheds load if it looks like there's too many things trying to come on at the same time. Looks pretty basic here, but it's really sophisticated and probably the next time I get a chance to speak with you all, we'll have some data to show you how much money it is saving us. High school library. Gave me a lot of gray hair. But we were able to, the maintenance department and the custodial staff really, really worked hard on this. We removed a lot of book shelving and we replaced them with tables, chairs, and we're still working on it. It's still evolving a little bit, but I think we're getting there and it's, it's a much user-friendly environment now. East Elementary, we did some asbestos removal on floor tile, things that we've been meaning to get to for a few years. We've got the funding. We were able to take this floor up in between all the items that we had where we had camps, students, staff. We got it all remediated. They had the camps. Camps were over, we went back in and put the new flooring in. This is in two breezeways, one upstairs and one downstairs at East. Painting project. We were able to paint most, all the halls in the building at East this, this summer, actually this spring. And this is just a little indication of what they look like. They made a major, major difference. Now we're back working with Chris, the principal. She's bought some bulletin boards that we're going to hang on the walls to kind of dress it up. We're getting there. PTC playground, this is in the front. It's the new playground. The reason it's there is it looks kind of simple. We had a vendor come and put it in, but we worked with the town and we removed all the old stuff and hauled it away and coordinated the installation with the vendor. Here's the East Elementary School, the oil line repairs. Left-hand picture shows the top of the tank. We have a new sump where the new lines are start at the top of the tank. Picture on the right shows the cut in the driveway, some plywood over the cut in the sidewalk. And we actually went underneath that wall and into the building. John Perna, the assistant facility manager, has kind of spearheaded this job and the one at South and he's done a really nice job for us. Thank you, John. We're at a point now where everything is completed. We have a little bit of repair work on the asphalt and the curbing. The piping is all done inside. We're waiting for some reports on some test wells that we drilled on the O-line to see what kind of contaminants we might have in there. But we're pretty hopeful that we're in good shape. Joanne Rocco talked about the entryway to her South parking lot. Picture on the left shows the repair progress and then the finished product on the right-hand side. South, we went in and we painted a bunch of hallways and I talked to Joanne and we said, let's try to do some classrooms. And typically you do everything in what I call industrial beige. And I gave her a selection of colors and she was able to have the teachers pick. So a lot of the classrooms down in that wing, they're all pastel colors and you can see the dramatic difference it makes with the furniture and the walls and a much more inviting atmosphere, I think. I mean, I feel really good about it. I think Joanne does too. The rest of you are going to have to wait. We'll get to you. South Elementary School, that's the window project that Joanne spoke of. We have trailers coming every day. We're bringing in pieces, hopefully that will get it all going. And we had a meeting today to discuss the scheduling and how we're going to move teachers back and forth from classroom to classroom. We have the two swing rooms in the building. And we're hopeful that we can move the project along. We talked about having a vendor maybe work on a couple of the school holidays that are coming up. They're not work holidays for him, so maybe we can get a little jump on it. Same thing. Here's another view of South in the front. And here's a classroom. This is typical of a classroom. And another 11th hour thing, the fire marshal come in and said, whoops, we don't have doors for fire egress. We need two means of egress. So sent the vendor out to Home Depot. We picked up some windows and he threw them in and we met the code. Here's the South PTC playground in the front, same situation. We pulled out the old one. Vendor come in, we coordinated that work and got it ready to go for school. South had a lot of playground work done this year. The back, the hill, I hope everybody gets an opportunity to take a walk. The pictures really show you what happened there, but you're really, it's a visual that you have to see to appreciate. Put in handicap ramps, the mulch is handicapped rated. They put the retaining wall to hold the hill back. It actually works as a seat. So if a parent is there with a child, they can sit on the wall. I know there's some plan to bring in some picnic tables and some other seating. Really makes a major, major difference in the back of the building. And if you peek up at the top of the picture, you can see the boardups in the back for the windows. This is the South oil line repair. There are lines that ran under the lobby and go into a crawl space under the building. We were not in compliance with those lines, so we had to have them replaced. So while we were at it, we went and dug a hole outside the doors of the lobby and we replaced all the lines. So now that we are in compliance, we have fiberglass lines and fiber lines that run into our boiler room. So we're strictly in compliance with the state to make sure that everything here is double lined and we, and we won't have an issue. We decided to do this piece outside the doors in preparation for when we're going to have to do something with the tanks three years down the road. Just made a lot of sense that we wouldn't have to disrupt the children at an entryway. We're putting a new entryway so we get all no one shot. Part of our energy management, energy projects, we installed some new equipment. We get rebates from CLMP. They help with the efficiencies in the building. They save us money and we get a rebate. So well worth it. We've been doing these projects now for four years. Same issue, different units. These are at, on South. Same as the chiller that you saw that produces air conditioning. West Elementary School brown bag theater. We did some work on the stage. We finished the top, repaired the steps. And we actually painted the base coat because we had the money for the, for our painting project. And then Jan hired the lady to come in and did the presentation. So they were able to pick the colors. We could work together. So our base paint was one thing that she didn't have to do. Here are some of the corridors that we worked on. These are the connectors between the second and third building. And here is the West gym floor. We had some money in to replace it. We found we had some issues with water infiltration, groundwater. Drilled a couple of holes to get some samples to see we didn't have hazardous material and lo and behold, we had water. We had an issue during the spring with the thawing that we flooded the tunnels under the building. So I bring this to your attention because now we've moved forward. Let me just go to this one. These are, we have a hydro geological engineer that's surveying the property. They actually put in six of these wells. They're doing, right now what they're doing, they call is developing the well. Unfortunately, we haven't had rain in about six and a half years, I think. And it's going, we're going to have to wait till we get some heavy rain to see what that groundwater is really doing. Right now it seems you can hardly find it. But what we think happened and we'll get a thorough report is that the septic field out in the back backed up into the tank and we knew, we dumped the tank, we figured, but we had enough groundwater to fill a 20,000 gallon tank. And it was coming out the, through the, the building, through the foundation of the building and flooded the tunnels and into the boiler room. So we had a kind of a mess on our hands. So before we would go back and do anything with the gym, we had to identify where is this water coming from? What can we do to divert the water away from the building? Because it's going to continue to happen. Went back to the town and actually found where the septic fields are. They're about three and a half miles, no, they're down about 1,000 feet away from the school. They're behind the water tank at West. And we're going to have to do a bit of a survey back there and get in and take a look at where we think we might be having issues with those. Because if they were filling with water and pushing water back up the hill, you got a lot of water. I wanted to go back to this slide. For all the years that I've been here, years before I ever got here, the snow used to accumulate on these metal roofs and when it, the sun came out, it would slide off in sheets like an avalanche. No matter what we did to try to prevent it, it just, two winters ago was really nasty. So we were able to go back. We put these snow guards on there and hopefully we'll be able to prevent any of those issues from happening. That's it. If you have any questions?
I have some things I, I would like to summarize, just starting. I remember two years ago, walking through these places and many of these rooms, the buildings. And we brought various groups from the town that were looking at it and how much it was going to cost and, and showing them was a very important part of understanding that the necessity for so many of the things in this packet. And I thank all the people who've worked on this, custodians, the, anybody who has just really given the extra time and effort to make sure that this came out right. And most of all, thank you for the expertise and the leadership that you've shown to have something like this to happen. When you just speak about what goes on in the schools during the summer, that has to be orchestrated in order for you to go in and do all of this. It's a very special operation. And I know the principals have participated and helped in that and in many different ways, but we certainly appreciate everybody else who's been working on this and making it happen. That's.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I mean, just kudos to you and, and your group. It's a lot of projects, a lot of work, a lot of coordination. And we're just so happy to have you here doing this all for us. And that we made this a priority and had the money to do these because a lot of these things have been lingering on and it's important for us to maintain our buildings so that we don't have bigger issues later on. I did have one question though. On the South school window project, when do you foresee that being completed? I know that you're trying to get the vendors in and on holidays. Are we talking about a month, two months?
The last they spoke, they felt it was going to take probably to the end of October. The date has moved. It's been kind of fleeting. We think there's going to be some glass delivered tomorrow. Vast majority of the frames for the windows are in, the operational pieces. There was an over the road truck came today and I was very enthusiastic, 53-foot truck. Wow, we're going to get all this stuff. We got 16 little packages. It was like, you know. So we've talked to the vendor and he's working real hard to get this stuff delivered. We look like we're going to get a substantial shipment tomorrow and hopefully they'll start working on this. They'll do some inside preliminary work. They'll probably go full-blown this coming Friday. And hopefully on Monday we'll have them back. We've talked about working Saturdays. Just weather, weather, weather. We haven't had any rain, so it's been a great time to work. As chance would have it, probably you're going to go start in the work. It's going to start raining. So I couldn't tell you definitively when, but we'll try to keep you updated on a regular basis. See how far we can move, how many windows you can get done in an evening.
And then the other question I had, I know that.
Just an update on that also. Through Joanne and Bob, they've targeted, they're putting the windows in the classrooms first. So even though it's going to take till the end of October is the current schedule, you know, we expect that we'll have the windows into the classrooms, you know, earlier than that. And then some of the common areas which, you know, which don't affect students all day long will be the ones done at the end.
At the end. And then the other question I had, I know that, you know, when Nancy was here, we started looking at, you know, the maintenance projects and doing that. I hope that that will continue for this next year, what we're going to attack for the following summer. And that we'll be able to go through that again and go with priorities and kind of make sure that we stay on top of the maintenance.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, even though all this work was done, there's still a lot to do.
Yes, exactly.
And we'll be sure to make the point.
Scott?
I just had one question. I think you guys did a fabulous job. And I feel like I'm kind of nitpicking, but I look at a picture like this and much as I'm a huge fan of plywood, can't we get some student artist in there or something? Are those doors going to be there a long time?
They're going to board that up when they start the project, but yeah, long time.
The school year for sure.
Couple of months, yeah.
We should do something a little cheerier.
Okay. Let me see if we can talk to the art department or do something.
Well, that sounds like a good suggestion. Allison?
I just want to say there's so many reasons to be so proud of our school system and looking at this, these photographs, the state of our facilities is one of them. You know, you provide us with such consistency. Every year you come before us at this time of the year and you give us the gift of schools that are ready to open. And I know we heard the principals that are so appreciative of that. But it wasn't lost on me that the common threads that ran through everybody who got up there to speak besides student leadership and mentoring and communication was thanks to you and your staff for having their schools ready. So I, you know, my kids are long gone from the school system. First time in 20 years I didn't have anyone going to any school this year, so I'm adjusting. But I have to say, listening to all of you get up and speak and just your excitement, your passion, and then looking at your photographs and hearing what's going on with the schools, it's just really exciting, even not having anybody in the school system. It's just really, really exciting to hear about the start of the school. So I just want to wish you all a wonderful year and thanks so much for reporting to us tonight.
It's really been, I'm sure that there are many students that walked into these rooms and hallways and you heard lots of excited comments as they noticed and knew the differences and things were happening. And they're certainly going to enjoy them for the rest of the year, many years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, we'll move now to the year-end financial report.
Yep. So we now transitioned. We've been talking about the start of the new year and now we're going to make a transition to talk about the close of last year. As you know, the, the way our budget works, although it runs July 1st to June 30th, it takes some time to close out the books based on encumbrances. time to close out the books based on encumbrances and other things, the salaries that we pay over the summer for work that was performed in the previous year, things like that. So Joanne and her team has been working, have been working diligently in pulling all this together. So as Joanne's learning about our system and learning about our schools, she's also working actively to put together the year end close. I thought we'd sort of walk you through that, talk about, we've got the report in front of you. It says at the top, New Canaan Public Schools FY 2015 Final Financial Report. It's important to note, these are unaudited, you know, and you'll see, we'll make that point a couple of times as we go through. The audit takes some time, generally a few months from now. Hopefully, if all goes well, that'll be completed and then we can give you an update based on there. But with that as a brief intro, Joanne, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you and good evening. This has been a great experience for me going through, closing out the prior year's books because as Brian said, it's given me the opportunity to learn a great deal about how the school district actually operates and really manages and its expenditures and categorizes them and reports them out. So it's been a good experience for me. I've tried to put this report together in a thoughtful way so that you can review it by the source of revenue that supports the certain expenditures. So the first report that I have, which is the most extensive, obviously comes from your operating budget. So we'll review that first. And there's a few actions you're going to need to take on that in order for us to close out the year. I then have the federal and state grants that do come into your budget. They are not part of the operating budget, but they certainly do provide some support that would otherwise have to come out of your operating budget. And then thirdly, you do receive donations. The people in your community are extremely generous, as I've come to realize just looking at the donations that have come in in cash, not to mention the many donations I'm sure you received that are non-cash donations. We have an item for rental revenue, very small, but it's something important to report out because we had a few expenditures. And then we have a category called other revenue whereby the district does charge for preschool, early bird, which is something I learned about this summer, didn't know about that. And then we do a ride share with another district for transportation. On the front page of the document, I did recap for you where we stand with the general fund, and that's very important. The approved budget was $80,875.58. Actual expenditures out the door, cash that we paid between July 1st and June 30th was That does include the encumbrances that were made for this past summer and the reversal of the encumbrances that were made in 2014. So that does provide the true up accounting on salaries in that number. And then the encumbrances are strictly for accounts payable. So the total expenditures recorded on the books is $80,806.379. And there will be a balance of $64,179 that will remain in the budget and basically be returned to the town. In looking at all of the accounts and actually recording up to the number for expenses and encumbrances, there are some transfers that need to be made between your account categories. And so those are detailed on the front page. Salaries, interestingly enough, represent 65.9% of your budget. And bottom line, while there were transfers in between different line items, it was less than a half of a half a percent that your budget was in need of additional funding. So I, that's pretty remarkable by anybody's standards. There was money left in employee benefits. I think the biggest line item was unemployment because there was less, which is good. And that, that's probably being controlled through HR. There was an increase needed in contracted services, facility operations. There was a decrease in other purchase services for a number of reasons we'll look at. And the book account and supply account, which are numerous, numerous accounts, really to have a $1,400 bottom line transfer is, is again, very remarkable. And other expenses required an additional $34,964. So that's basically a recap of everything that was processed through the general fund operating budget. As the new person coming in to actually record these numbers and verify these numbers, I did go through a lengthy process of reconciling the books, the expense accounts within the books to the transactions. So I worked on looking at all the AP warrants, all the payroll warrants, tying in any transfers between the various funds in the district, taking into account voids. There's a number of transactions that are manual transactions to the books, such as the board's contribution to Internal Services Fund. We don't write a check to the town for that. That's a, that's a journal entry that we have to record. So I took quite a bit of time to make sure that I had a clear understanding of the books where all the transactions were flowing in and out of, and reconciled the expense accounts to all of those other source documents to ensure that the report is accurate. And Brian and I spent several hours reviewing all those reconciliations and going through everything. And so I feel confident that this is a good document for an audit, to go through an audit at this time. Unlike maybe some others, I'm the type of business manager person who does like to do transfers on a regular basis. So moving forward, if there's a need to do transfers on a monthly basis, you'll see them in the report. And you might not have to act on them because there's not enough to go between categories. But within a category, you may see transfers. And especially as we become more familiar with munis, and Gary's doing a great job with his staff, making sure all the coding is correct and following up with the administrators, we may have some people coded to accounts that they weren't coded to at budget time. So you'll be seeing some of those transfers. But hopefully over the next year, we're going to get better and better at it. We were looking at the encumbrances for this coming year just today. And really, I think there, we have a fairly clean document to roll up into encumbrances, which is something new for next year as well. We haven't encumbered the salaries in the past and we will be doing that in 2016. So again, as I went through this, I really did look at all of the accounts, sampled a lot of the transactions, pulled them out, took a look at them to kind of make sure that I understood the coding. And as a result, this report has been compiled based on what you've seen in the past, with the exception of the transfers being posted to all of the accounts, the individual accounts. One of the things that I did notice I went through here, again, I mentioned the salary accounts were very close. Substitute teachers is something that ran over last year. We'll keep track of that this coming year.
Joanne, are you on page three?
We're on page three. So that's something that just kind of popped out that it was an issue last year. We'll have to monitor that. Again, we'll have to keep monitoring the allocation of salaries between the accounts. Unemployment, as I mentioned, came in under budget, which was helpful. Outsourcing services required additional funding for this year. And so that's something that we need to kind of dive a little deeper into to find out why, why that occurred. But there are a number of accounts here that you can go through and take note of. Towards the end of the year, there were some funds remaining in some of the accounts. And the board did make decisions to help support up some of the remediation work at Saks Middle School. That came out of the operating budget. So as you see some accounts, such as the non-instructional equipment account, or some of the accounts in facilities looking like they needed a little larger transfer in, it's because of those decisions that the board was making at the end of last school year to say, you know, we have money. Where do we need it most? Let's, let's put it there. Paving of the south driveway was another one of those particular items. So I will take a pause. If you have any questions on the general fund, I would be happy to attempt to answer any of your questions. I think you'll note on the first page of the general fund summary, out of your total allocation, you spent 99.92% of your budget request, which was pretty remarkable.
Joan, I just question, I saw your footnote that, are we still waiting to get another disbursement for the excess cost grant? Or are we good on that? Because I see that you've got the first installment, but are we still waiting for the second installment?
Interestingly enough, that first installment did come over in June. And my understanding from a long conversation I had with Nancy, that at budget time, when the 2014-15 budget was being developed, it was developed on a net basis, which means that in the tuition out of district account, all of the gross cost expenditures for that account were calculated. And then the, an estimated grant was deducted from that amount, $600-plus thousand dollars to come up with a net budget amount. Now, if I take a look at the numbers, that would hold true. And I'm going to point you to a page here. It is on page, page six. At the top of page six, there's a few lines down, you're going to see an approved budget of $2.7 million. Now, if you look over to the year-to-date expenditures, it's $2,842. But that has the $560,179 netted from that number because it came into the budget as a credit. So that would indicate to me that, and the additional 104 that also could have come into this account, that this, this account was budgeted on a net basis. The 104 has not come. Bottom line, we don't need the 104. But if all else had been held static in the budget, you can see here, we had to put an extra $160,164 into that account from other sources. So that money, that 104 would have been needed to, you know, to help balance out that particular account. So this is where it's going to be an interesting phenomenon as we move forward. My understanding is, the current year's budget is on gross. Now, we could be fine. However, if something happens, which it frequently does, I mean, we may have an issue. So we're going to have to really watch it very closely. So to answer your question, no, we did not get the 104. Yes, we did get the 560. And then the other thing, there's a third piece to excess cost, if you're not aware of it. When we go through the audit, we actually put together the final cost for each high-cost student. So that number could be greater or lower depending on whether or not there were more services required or less. And so we go through an audit process where we can actually file our actual expenditures and perhaps get more money from the grant. If we do, that money comes in in the subsequent year, but it's added to the ECS grant, which is different from the excess cost. So that automatically goes into the general fund. So it's an interesting concept in terms of how this excess cost does get applied to your budget. But thank you for bringing that up. I missed that.
Can I follow up on that?
Oh, just, yes, go ahead.
If the other comments are on the same subject, that's fine. I just wanted to, so the town, in fact, sort of underfunded our grant by $104,000. And I recognize that if we had gotten that $104,000 instead of returning them 60 or whatever it is we're returning, we'd be returning $164,000. But doesn't it make sense to actually have that transaction take place? Have the town transfer the money that is rightfully ours to us and then we transfer it back to them? While I know that it seems sort of insignificant, I think in terms of being able to state what is returned to the community from the Board of Education, it's important.
Yep, could be.
And I would encourage us to ask the town to make the transfer to the Board of Education because it's rightfully where the money belongs. And because we underspent our budget, that we would return it to the town as we do each year.
And you'll recall the ongoing conversations we had around the excess cost and the, you know, meetings we had around the 560 and having that money transferred over. And as, you know, that Joanne shared, without that, we certainly would have been in trouble, you know, with all of this. Because the, you know, the 28 you see here is actually not what our total spending was on this. It's the 28 plus the 560 was what, you know, the spending, spending actually was. The, going forward, being on a gross basis, you know, if we do wind up overspending, which as you say, does happen, then we would certainly ask the town for reimbursement around that because that's the, you know, the idea of the excess cost grant, that there's no way to truly budget for costs that, the unanticipated costs that can occur in special education. And they realize that the peaks and valleys could be such that they could blow out a budget if, you know, and really lose out in other ways if you had to take out of textbooks or other things to make up the difference on a high-cost child. So that, you know, us being gross gives us that a little bit more protection that way going forward.
No, I applaud the fact that we're going to be gross and I think that's great. But I think that in this instance, to whatever, you know, to whatever event, we can do it, I would love to see the town repatriate the money that is owed to us. And then we will give it back to them in terms of the money that was unspent. Because I think when people look, and a lot of it is maybe just PR, but when the people look at the budget and they say, oh, the Board of Education spent every single penny we gave them, short of $60,000, well, that's not true at all. So I think it's important message to send to the community that, you know, we do take things seriously. When we don't spend our full budget, we return it to the town.
I have a related question as well. So the point I didn't understand is, so where did the 160 transfer in to that account line come from?
The 560?
Do you know the transfer in of 160?
Oh, it came from a number of different accounts that actually were underspent. So there's, if you look through-
So I guess back to Scott's point, so if we wouldn't have had those transfers in, we would have needed the 104?
Correct. So- So for one account that-
That is not, yeah, I really want to echo what Scott said then because I don't think that's clear accounting. Because I think it's, we're not showing the true costs of, of the excess grants there, right? Because we're showing, we're transferring in money to cover that versus getting the reimbursement from the town funds.
I mean, you were fortunate to have used over $100,000 less in your energy account due to weather conditions and pricing. And so there's things like that that help. But if they didn't come along, if those nice things did not happen, then you would have had a problem. So yes, I, I think valid points have been raised.
I think this has been a new, I think that this year, we had from the municipal, from the town, that they wanted a different way of interpreting it. And I think it's been very well handled since this has been a difficult thing for us to handle all year long. And I think making note of it is everybody's saying that this was a change for us to handle and was handled as best as we could do it with what we had to handle it with. So I think there's, but to be, make sure that it's noted by everybody, I think is what we're saying.
Well, and it could either be handled the way Scott said, like have, or we could actually have an addendum that says, you know-
Give me a history.
There was funds transferred in from these underfunded accounts where efficiencies were captured to cover, you know, these, these costs. I mean, I think it should definitely be-
Well, we did try to, try to capture that in the footnote here on the second page, so summary page in.
Yeah. I read that. I don't think that captures.
Not clearly enough.
You want more detail.
Well, it doesn't capture where the money that's transferred came from.
Right.
What it does say is that of the entire excess cost, you know, the 560 came to the school, the 104 did not.
Okay, Penny has had her hand up for a long time. Go ahead, Penny.
So I guess I just want to make certain, I know we're going to budget on a gross basis, but we can only budget on a gross basis for those students and those costs that we're aware of when we start the budget process. That's what we've done for this coming year. And we could have surprises, this happened every year. So are we, since this was kind of an ongoing issue this year, are we resolved with the town now? Is it clear that if we have those additional costs and the town gets additional excess cost grant funds beyond the ones that we reimbursed, that they're going to transfer those funds over to the school district without kind of the issues that we had this year? Are we all, are we, I just want to make sure, I'd like just to have that playing field kind of set so that there isn't a chilling impact on other aspects of the budget.
Sure. And I believe that we are because again, that is the, the purpose, the spirit of the excess cost grant itself, is that if there is a need, it does need to first be used for those costs to cover the school's budget so that a few high-cost students don't negatively impact the rest of the budget in a significant way. So the, so I believe that there is. We have had that discussion with them. The discussion, the most recent was probably back in May, so it's a good thing to revisit as we go into the new school year, and I'm happy to do so.
Thanks for all your work on it.
And we will be going over another exhibit in here that kind of really defines, and it's, it's right there in terms of state and federal grants. Before we leave the general fund, I did want to mention one observation that I have had going through this process of closing. And that is paying people in the summer for work that had been, has been completed on July 30th or prior is, is an enormous undertaking in terms of the work that it takes to do that accurately. And it delays your closing because our last pay is on August 30th and there could be changes. So we are working to try to resolve that operationally if we, if at all possible. So, we are working to try to resolve that operationally, if at all possible. And I think that it would really give us the opportunity to have a much better handle on our expenses, very early on, like by the end of June, or the first pay in July. So, for what that's worth, I wanted you to be aware of the challenges that are associated with that arrangement.
A lot of hands went up on this, and I had to number people, to be able to make sure we hit everybody. Deanna's next, and then Allison, and then Sangita. Okay, so everybody gets a chance.
I'm trying to find a diplomatic way to say...
This is a hot issue.
This next comment.
I think we have the same comment.
I know. I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Grass and Mrs. West. And I find it... It would be very interesting to see if, you know, we had any chance of getting that journal entry made with the town. After, you know, Dr. Keating didn't have the joy of experiencing the original $560,000 that we tried to get from the town. So, I agree with you, but I'm not sure that, in practicality, that, you know, I like to live in sort of... But I think it is important that that statement was made, and thank you to both Scott and Sheri for making it, because I think it's important. And I think the community needs to know the great efforts that we've gone to, to get the original money that we were owed, and, you know... And I think they should appreciate all the work, you know, I think, you know, Mrs. Harris is now gone, and we can't, you know, thank her personally. But, you know, those energy savings, and even, you know, Mr. Willoughby out there, I mean, a lot of these cost savings are the result of, you know, a lot of work that was done by, you know, the Director of Finance and Operations, and the Facilities Manager, in really trying to recognize cost savings that are available to us. So, I don't want their work to be unnoticed in this process. That's it.
Allison.
I was just going to say, along the same lines, you know, we all know how much time was invested by Dr. Lutz and Mrs. Harris, in terms of trying to get that first 560. So, as ridiculous as it sounds, because I completely agree with both Sheri and Scott, that in terms of being less confusing, and more accurate, and a more honest number for the town, everyone wants to know what exactly does the school system cost, and here we have, you know, this amount of money that's sitting out there, that isn't necessarily being accurately reflected. But as a board member, I would really hesitate to ask Dr. Keating and Dr. Lutz to invest more of their time in this issue. I would much rather have them paying attention to much more significant issues for our system. But... So, I think we just have to wait, to weigh that out. But actually, Dr. Keating, I just want to ask you a quick question. You mentioned that third piece of the excess cost grant comes as part of the ECS, the Educational Quotient Sharing Grant? Is that what... Do I have that correct? That if we get a third reimbursement, it comes as part of that?
As a subsequent year.
And I just want to clarify, I think the town in New Canaan, we do not receive that money back from the town.
No.
Right, I know in other towns, the town does forward that money to the Boards of Education, but I know the town in New Canaan does not give us that money. So, I guess that's another piece, really, that really doesn't... Therefore, that's another piece taken out of the accurate reflection of our true costs.
Yeah. And I think that's more a local decision on that third piece of the funding, but I wasn't, you know, completely knowing if you knew about that piece of it. So, let's say you get a high-cost child in in February, and you hadn't had the time to put it in, we still can get that money back for the town.
Right. No, thank you. I actually didn't know that, so I appreciate that.
Sangita, thank you.
Sure. Well, I think it's been said already, so I don't need to add to the layers of that, you know, just in terms of transparency, people to understand how the budget works, of just that little accounting thing. But I also had another question, just regarding the general funds here. Because I do really, again, want to point out that, you know, you did a great job, we noticed this past year, if we're looking at trends, too, in the budget, that you had a decrease in the other purchase services of $200,000, which is, you know, I'm not quite sure where that pans out. Was there any particular places where it was a major, was it just a little bit off of each section that you're saying? Or if there was a major area that we, again, showed the efficiencies we created?
Yeah, I actually did look at that, because I thought it was a significant amount as well. And understand, I did not put the budget together, so I'm just looking at account codes and seeing where they're changing. But the payroll services came down.
What page?
I think that was a product of just bringing the...
Dr. Keating, what page are you on?
It's on page four, I think you're talking about outsourced services, is that what you're referring to?
Right, I just noticed that you had a $200,000 decrease, which is significant. So, I was just wondering if there was one particular area that we really showed efficiencies in bringing it down, or if it was just like a little section each area, you know, if there was any trend?
Yeah, it was a combination of a lot of things. There's about 60 accounts that actually go roll up into this section here. But the one that I noticed that was probably the most significant, was in the payroll services.
And then, along that same line, not as much of an increase, but anything when I see like 100,000, was there anything significant in the facility operations that kind of caused us to go increasing? Is it just, you know, inflation rates, or just any particular...
No, there was $100,000 put aside towards the end of the year, for the Saks remediation project out of that account.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Scott.
So, the ECS grant, forget the portion of it that's the excess cost grant that comes, that goes into that fund the following year. The total ECS grant is about... Do we know about what that is? Dollars?
I can look it up online.
I hesitate to...
Around $2 million. It's 700, maybe 1.6.
Okay. So, we're going to refer to that for a little while, as a boatload of money. And the money comes into us from the state government, because of money that we expended?
No, it's basically based on a formula grant, and it has to do with wealth factors, primarily, and student enrollment, and a number of other things. But New Canaan, like 20 other districts, I believe, in the state of Connecticut, I might be off one or two, fall within the minimum cap. So, if there wasn't this minimum cap of 2% or 1 point, whatever percent it is, you would probably not receive any grant funds back. So, it's formula-driven.
Okay. And we don't show that anywhere in our budget?
No, that is typically a general fund operating revenue.
For the town?
From the state, yeah. On the town side.
So, I have it as 1.4.
Now, one of the things I can share with you, that I did in Weston, was I did an exhibit at Budget Time, to show all of those revenues, so that you really did have the proper impact on mill rate, reflected in your...
I think that's fabulous.
Yes.
That's kind of what I'm getting at. So, because I think that the world thinks that we just, you know, that we spend our $80 million, and that nothing comes back in. And it would be nice to know, for the taxpayers to know, that, you know, a million and a half plus whatever dollars comes back in from the state, because of the Board of Education's expenditures, and because of our operations. And so, therefore, there, you know, it's kind of like our little $168,357 that we're really returning to the town, would be nice... And I don't... I agree with you, I don't want you to spend a lot of time chasing that. Perhaps if the media would report it that way, I would be satisfied.
Any other questions on the general fund?
Any other questions? Go ahead, Penny.
This is... The question isn't really on the general fund. I know that with respect to our health insurance, the number in the general fund is kind of a keyed-in number, in that we're going through some of our reserves this year, so the general fund is not reflecting, as we planned with the town bodies, it's not reflecting the true cost of our health insurance this year. Do we... I was wondering if we knew when we were going to get the full report on the year-end closeout, and IBNR and all that, for the last fiscal year, and the health insurance, to understand where we are in our reserve situation.
Sure. We did receive the IBNR last week, I believe, and I did send that over to the Director of Finance for the town. Hopefully, we'll have the statements within the next few weeks. I know they're working hard to get their statements completed. I have an accounting of what's flowed through the checking account. I don't have a clear accounting of all the revenue streams, because there are a few, not ju... Well, the largest, obviously, is from the board's budget. But I'm sure TRB goes into that, I'm sure the employees' quota sharing goes into that, COBRA. So, I want to make sure that we are completely accounted for, before I start including reports in any official document to the board. So, that's why I kind of held on that. I do have my worksheet, but it's not complete. Hopefully, by next report, we'll have something for you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, we can move on to the federal and state grants, which is on page eight. So, in just showing the grant, one of our goals was to show, in this report, the expenditures against revenues. And since we netted out the excess cost against our operating budget, Brian and I felt it was appropriate to show the excess grant on this report, since, basically, aside from IDEA, it's our biggest grant that comes into our budget. The award for the grant was the 664,357. As we've discussed, the town did send us 560,179, and the balance of 104,178, as I've noted right below, is being retained in the town's general fund. So, if that changes, I'll modify this report. Each year, the board gets a number of grants that are both current year and carryover, you're able to use them for two years. This year, we're fortunate to be able to carry over funds in Title II, which is a professional development grant, which Dr. Corente manages, and then Darlene Pienka manages the IDEA grants, and there's $37,000 in those funds to be carried forward. All in all, we received 1.7 million in awards, we expended 1.5 million, we're returning 106, with the 104 included, and we have $91,000 that we're carrying forward.
Could you remind me again, what does IDEA stand for?
It's the Individual with Disabilities Education Act. And there's two parts to it. There's a preschool part, and then there's basically everything else part.
Thank you.
And so, you're able to carry that over for a two-year period, so some districts will spend a portion of it, all of it. It really depends on how they choose to budget that. But that funding, if we did not receive it, would have to come through a local levy to provide these services, and they're mandated services, especially for the special ed students, which account for 90% of this grant money here. Looking to the next exhibit, the next exhibit shows the operating funds, revenues and expenditures for the cafeteria fund. And what we've done here is broken it out by school, and the district offices, district administration, to provide you with a snapshot of the full year operation for 2015. As you can see, the revenues exceeded expenditures by $133,682, which is positive. I will note to you, however, that the board does pay for the employee health benefits for that group. There's a little over 20, I think there's 21 folks in that group that do receive health insurance. We based our calculation as to what that costs, on the allocation rates prepared by Steve Rinaldi for us, and that's where the calculation is derived from. That 440 is just the board's cost, it's not of any employee contributions. So, it's strictly the board's cost. And I did report this out, just so that you know, on Schedule III of the EDO-1 this year. And so, the way that works is, they really net that out from profit, so it's about a $307,000 expenditure that I had to report out, once the whole worksheet was completed. But that is something we might want to talk about in the future, strategize a little bit about how we might look to mitigate some of that expenditure, if that's something that the board feels they want to do, and certainly looking at plan design and other things that can help control that, we're going to want to do as well. Overall, it's a fairly good program, though, at least financially.
So, I was just wondering, where the... I knew we put in that extra window at Saks this year, which helped with the lines. And is that cost reflected on this page, for the food service program? Did the funds for that change come from elsewhere in the budget?
It really did come, I think, mostly from the facilities budget.
Okay.
I will verify that, but in looking at the expenditures, one of the charges came through this budget, I think, to hook up the line. There was some other support that Bob did provide through his budget.
Okay. Thanks.
Question, just, I know at one point, we had spoken about using income, I think when the answer's here, but just, you know, when you get a positive in the count, to use that back again into updating, because you do have to have maintenance and such for those different health programs, or whether it's a new kiosks, or whatever it is, heating units, whatever else. Are we... Where does this money ending up going right now? Is it going to the... Is it just kept separately, or does it go back to the general?
Well, this is an enterprise fund, so it has to be accounted for in a separate balancing set of books, and we have a separate checking account for that. So, any funds remaining in this account do stay within the fund, and are either designated or undesigned. So, depending on whether or not there's been a commitment for equipment replacement, that would designate some fund balance if you haven't paid for it in the fiscal year. But certainly, my practice has been to reinvest the money, because you're really deriving this from revenue from children.
Right.
We're paying for the services. So, to upgrade the equipment, I think, is appropriate. Sometimes, when it comes to the building, I think that really depends on what we want to do, in terms of managing the space. And maybe it's not necessarily an expense of the program, that's a discussion item, but certainly keeping the money within the fund, and also having enough revenue to start up your year, because your revenue, you need a few months of operations to build up revenue in the account, in order to pay your bills. So, it is a management issue, but the funds do stay within the account, and are used for that purpose strictly.
What's the fund balance now?
I will look that up for you. I don't have that off the top of my head, but I will look that. I'm sure there's a few hundred thousand dollars in there carrying over, but let me find that out for you.
That'd be great, thanks.
How much do you usually need to have, at least to start off the year, just so that you don't go negative?
Three months of operating.
How much, like 100, 50?
No, I think three months of operating on a 10-month is probably closer to $5,000 to $600,000.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's probably where the cash balances are, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You're not held to that rule, because you're not in the federal program, as you probably are aware of. That is like a federal guideline. The last exhibit, we tried to provide you with information on all other sources of revenue, and these are the expenditures related to the revenues. So, I want to caution you that, like in the donation fund that was set up, Fund Five, I think it was this past year or the year before, there have been donations that have been made into that fund, that because we have not spent the money yet, the projects took place this summer, you're not going to see them reflected on here. This is on a cash disbursement basis, not on a crude basis, so just so you're aware. But as you can see, just through straight donations, $214,447, and this is just as this fund is beginning to become more accepted, used, more prevalent in the school system. And I think we're going to get better and better at getting those funds directly into this fund, for accounting purposes, rather than going directly to the schools. But $214,000 in any given year for a school district is really impressive. With regards to the rental revenues, there were two purchases that were made out of balances remaining in that rental revenue account, one for audio, one for lighting. This summer, I think it was $36,000 that was set aside for the Saks auditorium remediation. So, we'll see that next year, because it was completed this summer. And then, as we mentioned, we did an accounting of the tuition, school tuition, and the early bird fees, and ride sharing. There's $95,000 there. All of these numbers were reported on the EDO-1, so all of this ties into the EDO-1. And just so that you do know, I know there's been a lot of conversation about the EDO-1, and Schedule III, and Schedule VII, and Schedule VIII. They're all prescriptive, and they all are designed to report expenditures related to the regular program. So, they're not designed to report expenditures for, let's say, an enrichment program during the summer. Those schedules are really designed to capture regular program expenditures. So, I think there may be some misunderstanding around that.
In addition to the... If we could see, I guess, the balance of all the funds, that would be helpful.
Sure.
And then, my last question is, we see here expenses that were spent out of the revenues, but what we don't see are the total revenues and total expenses. So, if we could see that as well, that'd be helpful.
All of that becomes available with the audit. So, we can see last year's, for instance, by looking at the FY 2014 audit.
Right.
So, we could, you know, pull those things together, but in the next couple of months, too, we'll have the actual audited numbers as well. And we actually do have those numbers in the back of the budget book.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't have... I just don't have, don't have it with me.
Yeah, no, I've seen them.
But those were the audited numbers from FY 14.
Okay.
So if we take these and look at, you know, look, take those, look at these, we can get that, get all of that information together.
What I'm going to set up with Tracy is a system whereby, as we receive donations, we set up the budget account as an appropriation. So you can see right then and there on your report that your, that appropriation number is your revenues. That's what you received in from donations. And then your expenditures match up against that line item, and you can see where you stand in terms of actual expenditures for specific donations.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Because sometimes it's by certain parent groups too, because is it then divided? Because like, I know they only want it to go, the boosters want it to go to the coach's salary. Is it set up that way, or?
It's set up by the purpose of the donation. So if the PTC gives a donation from West for textbooks, there's an account code for that. And the way we're going to do it is set up an appro, we get that check, we're going to set up that in appropriation so that the schools can order the books against their, the transaction goes through and it's fairly clean. So there's no guesswork as to whose money it is, so to speak, or the purpose of the donation.
Are there any other questions? We have two motions that we need to vote on. And the first of these is, one is to approve the transfers, which are listed on page one of the unaudited 2015 financial, final financial reports dated September 8, 2015. So if you'll look at the transfers, which are down at the bottom part. It's this, you see where it's labeled transfers? Okay. And first page, first page, right here. Right here.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not. So the wording of it is a move.
Yeah, we need to amend the agenda. Can we do that now?
Ah, that's a good point. Let's amend the agenda. Thank you very much, yes.
I move to amend the agenda to include a vote on the transfers from the FY 2015 budget line items.
Yes. Okay.
Second motion.
Second on the motion. All those in favor, please signify for voting. That's unanimous of everyone here. And the second motion.
Well, now we need to make, no, that was just to amend the agenda. Now we need to make the motion.
To make the motion itself.
To approve the transfers.
Okay. Not to, don't want to do the budget.
So moved.
To the agenda.
I think the other one's already on there.
Oh, okay, that's right, okay.
Scott just moved it.
Yes. Okay, second, all right. All those in, do you want to say it one more time, Scott, just to make sure everybody got it? Thanks.
Move to approve the transfers on the budget as presented.
Page one, okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands.
I second it.
She seconded it.
Second. She seconded, sorry. Second from Allison. All those in favor?
And just for clarity, should that motion be to transfer between the account categories, all within the New Canaan public schools approved budget? I would think that we would just follow the language, follow the language at the bottom of the page.
Okay.
We will give you a copy.
Okay.
As a trusted member of our team.
Okay. It's right at the bottom, following budget transfer. We'll get it. Yes, we'll get it to you. Okay. The second motion is the one that is already that we have, that we're voting on, and it's move to accept the 2015 financial, final financial reports, unaudited as presented September 8, 2015.
Make the motion.
Allison's making the motion, and the second from Sherry, thank you. Any questions on that one before we go on? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That's unanimous also. Lisa, I'll get back with you and sort of make sure you have everything. We now have our consent agenda, which is item number seven, which we need to make a motion on that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay, thank you. And a second. Sherry, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? That's unanimous also. Announcements about future meetings?
Our next meeting is back to a Monday instead of Tuesday as is tonight, on the 21st. We will do our first statement of accounts for the FY 16 budget a couple of months in. Jen will be able to give us an update on that, and we'll see if we also have some updated information around the insurance as we discuss tonight. We'll have an update from the Saks Building Committee and give a quick snapshot on where things are and how things are moving along. And then we'll also have an executive session afterwards regarding legal, some legal issues we need to catch up on.
Okay. That be narrowed. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, you know, Hazel, before you go, I just want to say, just one thing, I just want to thank Dr. Keating. You know, you came in at kind of a rough time. We have a particular citizen or two in town throwing around a lot of allegations and misinformation, and a difficult environment for you to come into. So I just want to thank you very much for your very easily understandable clarifications on Board of Ed finances. So hopefully, the public is straight, and certainly, we're all straight on it, and hopefully, we won't have to deal with this for much longer. So thank you very much.
Allison, thank you. We, you've done a terrific job of coming in and catching us all up on different things and making sure that the books are all ready to be presented when they're ready and on time and everything. So thank you very much, very appreciated. Thank you, Allison, for, went too quickly to all those votes, wanted to get it passed, so. Now, adjourn the meeting. Motion to adjourn. Jen, and a second. And at the other end, Jean, second from Jean. All those in favor, please raise your hand, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.